Where the two fell off that and they fixed it up and then they...
Well, hello.
Well, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
We're late. I'm late.
Yes, you are.
I should so.
That's why I was sent to get you. I think you two are... Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We're working from the yellow agenda right now. This is the time for public comments for items not on the agenda. If anyone would like to step forward for a public comment?
Uh, I need a moment.
Oh, okay, sure.
Roll call.
Yeah, we're all here, so in terms of roll call, we're all present.
Crap, sorry, cut off.
Yeah, but I should be okay, but in case.
Yeah. Are we still waiting on...
You gotta move the plant.
No, I just cut off what I was out on the link.
So we can hit the people.
They don't move it, they just hit it.
That's funny. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, seeing no public comments this evening, we'll move on to special orders of the day. The first item is item 3.1. Should I go ahead and read it, Karen, or do you have anything? No?
No.
Okay. So, "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville in recognition of the contributions made by Jennifer West during her term on the Emeryville City Council. Whereas Jennifer West was elected to the City Council of the City of Emeryville in 2009 and also served as mayor of Emeryville in 2012. And whereas Jennifer West's commitment to developing Emeryville into a model sustainable city and advancing the quality of life for everyone living in Emeryville, especially families with children, was the foundation of her tenure on the City Council and as mayor of the City of Emeryville. And whereas Jennifer West's commitment to urban sustainability led her to represent the City Council on the Alameda County Waste Management Authority Board of Directors and to be selected by her elected peers in Alameda County to be Board President in 2014. And whereas, under her tenure, the city expanded affordable housing, increased the city's green spaces, established additional community gardens, and continued to support the arts, as well as partnered with the Emory Unified School District in establishing the Emeryville Center of Community Life. And whereas Jennifer West was instrumental in advocating for pedestrian, bicycle, and other forms of alternative transportation. And whereas, under her tenure, the city successfully transitioned into the post-redevelopment era by working with community members to create alternative means of addressing the city's economic and affordable housing development, capital improvement, public infrastructure, and program service needs. And whereas, under her tenure, the City of Emeryville became a charter city with the ability to chart its own municipal destiny, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Emeryville hereby recognizes Jennifer West's many contributions as a City Council member and wishes her all the best as she takes on the next phase of her life." Thank you, Jennifer.
Well, thank you. That's very nice. And I appreciate all the people who turned out this evening. You may not be surprised that I have a few words I want to share with you as well. And I started to put this into kind of a more formal speech. It didn't work out that way, so it's more of my notes. And when one of my daughters stood up the other day and mocked me by reading through them, it was very funny, but we'll see how I do. First of all, I just want to say what a gift it's been to have the opportunity to serve you here in Emeryville. And I credit the size of the town and the active participation of folks to make it possible for me to do that, and I'm grateful for that. First, of course, need to thank my family. I was realizing tonight that for more than half of my youngest daughter's life, I've been on the council. And, you know, it's just with their support, I was able to do this, so I'm grateful to them for that. I want to thank all of my friends who supported me as well, my community at Doyle Street Co-Housing that made it possible. And I really want to thank my fellow council members for teaching me and for showing the way on the council and also, you know, being willing to entertain ideas that I raised and to support those as well. I'm especially grateful to Jack's leadership this last year as mayor, and having her on the council has been a real benefit, I think, to me and also to the city. And I want to thank a person who's not sitting here but was five years ago, which is John Fricki, who, you know, first planted the seed in my mind to run. And although we had very different styles, I appreciate his values and principles as well. I want to thank the staff in the city. Many of you have been here much, much longer than I have, and I just appreciate all of the hard work and the dedication that you have and support of moving things along and the policy decisions that the council's made. And, you know, having hired a new city manager, which is really the biggest job that we have as a city council, was a very... has turned out to be a wonderful thing, and I'm just glad that the city's in such good hands and has such good leadership. While I was on the council, you may know that I quit teaching and I went to graduate school, studied public policy for two years at the Goldman School in Berkeley. And my fellow students there, of course, were wonderful folks to talk about and to kind of mull over what I was doing in my application of policy here in Emeryville. So I'm grateful to them for their support as well. Similarly, my coworkers, now that I've worked two years implementing some of these ideas as well at Transform, I'm glad to have that environment. And then regionally, I found that reaching beyond the borders of Emeryville as an elected official was really important to me. And I want to say to those who will be soon stepping up to the dais that it's important to recognize what lies beyond our square mile and how our decisions and our thoughts here really impact and looking at it from a regional perspective, because so many things are outside of our boundaries as well. And the school board members that I've gotten to know and worked with in town, the Stop Waste Board members that I worked with, and all of those communities, really, Nancy Skinner and Lonnie Hancock and Barbara Lee, all have been supportive and welcoming, and it's been an amazing experience to get to work with people and see them close hand. I want to thank those people who did not support my candidacy five years ago. It was a contested election, and there were people who weren't ready or didn't know me well enough to support me, and I learned from them, and I learned through our conversations, and gained a lot of that support over these five years. And I feel like we're all the stronger for it, and I really appreciated their willingness to partner with me, because I was serious about that when I ran, and I'm grateful to them as well. Because we don't always have to agree, we just need to work together for Emeryville's sake. One other bit of knowledge that I got actually from Nancy Nadell, who served on the Oakland City Council, was the public participation principles that she shared with me several years ago. And really, it comes down to the people who are impacted by a decision need to be a part of that decision. And for me, that has really colored much of what I've done here for five years, and I think we're all the better for that as well. I hope that continues, of course. It's not easy being a part-time, underpaid public servant, even if you like meetings, which I do. But I look forward now to more time with my family, more time reading books, not packets, and having, you know, the dinners with friends that I've kind of foregone, perhaps more exercise, that's always good as well. Where I come from and my grandparents is who I am. My grandparents worked very hard, their whole lives, for social justice. For them, that looked like moving folks out of Mann's Narren Tournament camp during World War II. It looked like working in Selma on the race relations in 1963. It looked like founding Heffer International, as my grandfather Dan West did, to work on world hunger worldwide. And those principles were always, it's not what you say, it's what you do, and making a difference. And Emeryville is a small piece of that, but it's a place to try out those principles and to work on that as well. My parents did the same in their own way as professors, working on cross-cultural understanding and employment discrimination. So I want my kids to do the same, follow their ideals, and work to correct injustice wherever they can. It doesn't have to be lofty, it can be in the interactions with people in a community, in a small town, or in a region. I did my best for five years. I've heard from many of you that you appreciated my communication, and I'm hoping that we will have good communication going forward, because I know I'll need it. And things move so much slower than I ever thought they would in the city. But what worked was the improved discourse and conversation and the expressions in both meetings and also in the staff support, and I feel like we've made a difference. I have to close by just talking about some of the turmoil I think that our country is facing right now. And I'm talking about Ferguson, Missouri, but I'm actually talking about all of the injustices that we still feel every day. It's not just Ferguson, it's everywhere. And how important it is that we really hold true to our principles, because that will guide us in our decisions as we move forward. The Attitudinal Healing Connection, the organization that puts the murals here on San Pablo and Market Street, are doing really important work. And their principles are important, I know Kurt's talked about them before as well. But there is a lot of organizations in our midst that are really working hard on these issues, and I would like to see myself do more of that, but also recognize that each one of us makes those decisions as we go about our days and how we interact with people. So I think we need to honor and support those who demand change to our systems that perpetuate our injustices and inequalities. Black Lives Matter. The most important and guiding principle for me is that all people deserve to live in dignity and to be treated with dignity. You have to keep that in focus, and I think all the other decisions are easier. So let's keep working together to improve Emeryville and to create opportunity with liberty and justice for all, one day, I hope. Thank you.
What's your statement? Just make sure. Sleep together.
Hand in hand.
I don't skip, but we can...
Arm in arm.
I move the resolution.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's what.
All right, on to resolution 3.2. This is "Resolution of the City Council of the City of Emeryville in recognition of the contributions made by Kurt Brinkman during his term on the Emeryville City Council. Whereas Kurt Brinkman was elected to the City Council of the City of Emeryville in 2009 and also served as mayor in Emeryville in 2013. And whereas Kurt Brinkman's commitment to developing Emeryville into a model sustainable city and advancing the quality of life for everyone living in Emeryville, especially families with children, was the foundation of his tenure on the City Council and as the mayor of the City of Emeryville. And whereas Kurt Brinkman recognized that a close partnership between the City of Emeryville and the Emory Unified School District was integral to the city's future as a place that was welcoming and supportive of families. And whereas this recognition led him to be a leader in the community-wide effort to serve our youth as well as the community at large in realizing the Emeryville Center of Community Life, which will soon be the heart of the Emeryville community. And whereas, under his tenure, the city expanded affordable housing, increased the city's green spaces, established additional community gardens, and continued to support the arts. And whereas, under his tenure, the city successfully transitioned into the post-redevelopment era by working with community members to create alternative means of addressing the city's economic and affordable housing development, capital improvement, public infrastructure, and program service needs, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Emeryville hereby recognizes Kurt Brinkman's many contributions as a City Council member and wishes him all the best as he takes on the next phase of his life." Thank you, Kurt.
Well, it's been 11 years, and for some, that's 11 years too long, but for me, it's been 11 great years. And I've really enjoyed my time serving the City of Emeryville and the time on the school board. And one of the things I'm passionate about is kids, and what we need to do to make sure that their lives improve, just like Jennifer was talking about. And so what I'm going to be doing now is I'm... My office is in West Oakland, and I plan on getting more involved with West Oakland. I'll still be connected here, but there's really a need for what worked well in Emeryville to spill over onto that part of West Oakland, because I've always said that for this city to be a great city, we have to have Oakland become a better city. And so that's one of the things that my focus is going to be. But also, I have to tell you that the tender on the past five years has been really a learning process for me. But I've also learned what a good city is made up of, and it's their staff. I mean, from when you drive around town, you look, you don't see garbage, you don't see messes anyplace, graffiti is very solemn scene. But then you look at our firefighters, we have the best firefighters around. You look at our police department, I'm very proud of our police department. And I've gotten to know the guys really well for not some very positive reasons, but they're so professional, and I take my hat off to them, because these guys really risk it out there. And they just really need to be thanked for what they do in town. And where's my screen? Uh-oh, you're gonna only have half my speech. But it's... I also want to talk about the city. We talk about friendly family, how to make families feel more involved with the city, but we also have to remember there's a lot of people that don't have families, and they too need to feel like that they're involved. Because we... So I like to have a city really focused on the residents. I don't care if you have 14 kids or if you have no kids, but, you know, the focus to me would be on the residents. And the other thing is the Chamber of Commerce. You know, I just saw today, or yeah, I guess it was today, Emeryville is the strongest online business community in California. And I've talked about how this little town, we have housing, we're going to be building more housing, but we can't lose focus, we need jobs in this town, and we need entry-level jobs for everybody. And we need to have a town where you can live here, walk to work, and walk home at night, because if we want to cut back on cars, that's the easiest way to do it. So let's focus on housing and jobs combined. And then I have to say to my council members, you know, we might have had our battles, but we didn't have any wars. And I think that was really... It's really important. We had some 3-2 votes, but most of our votes were 4-1, 5-0. So I mean, it sends a clear message to staff that the council is really committed to their cause, and then makes it easier for Sabrina and her staff. And I've enjoyed working with Sabrina, she was a great hire. One of the most challenging things you ever do is hire somebody like Sabrina, our superintendent of schools is another one. Mr. Biddle has been a real pleasure for me too, as all the rest of the staff has been. The other thing is, I have to really say there's somebody that's shaped my life, and my life has been shaped by three women. And one of them was my grandmother, another one was the mayor of a town that I used to live in, and the third is Nora Davis. I always learned something from Nora. Now, just look at her, she can't... You can't ever say anything positive to Nora, because she doesn't react.
That's true.
But she has really... In all the meetings, when you need a little bit of knowledge, a little historical knowledge, a little bit of just grounding, it's Nora comes to the rescue. And I really have appreciated the time spent with Nora as with everybody else in the City Council. One of the things, the hardest things I had to do, and I really felt guilty for it, we had a young man that was killed in Oakland, and his name is Aya. And so I got to know his mother and her partner, and so she had to leave for a period of time to get away, and so she went to Scotland, and she worked for the parliament there. So she brought me back the hat and the scarf, and then she kept giving me orchids. And I have to thank the council here, because we had a $10,000 reward for the finding of this man that killed this person. So today, I received two cards, actually, three cards, one is for me, and one is for the City Council. And I asked... I'm going to read this out loud, if you guys don't mind, I haven't seen it, but I just feel like I need to say this. "Wishing you the warmth of home, the love of family, and the light of faith." And this is "To the Emeryville City Council, all the joy, we're grateful for this day, Happy Thanksgiving. Remember your kind assistance and supportive for Aya's cause. Wishing you and your families the very best this holiday." So that was to the City Council. And then we had somebody in town anonymously give the fund some money, and it was a substantial amount of money. And so this is... May blessings abound, and this is quite a bit to read here, and I'm... But it says, "My sincere apologies if I had previously..." I really haven't touched it times, "remained in thanking you for your generosity. I am not sure and have as recollection a..." I'm sorry, I can't read the writing. Yeah, if you can try to.
It's "To the anonymous donor, my sincerest apologies if I was a teacher, you know, for a long time, so..." "If I have been remiss in thanking you for your generosity, I'm not sure and have no recollection of ever sending you a note acknowledging your kindness and generous contribution to Aya's cause. Please know that despite my negligence, I carry in my heart so much gratitude for your gift and people like you. You are a constant and heartwarming reminder that in spite of the evil that took my Aya away from me, here remains the good that easily trumps the ugliness and horror of that tragic day. The overwhelming love, kindness, and support shown and given to us is reminiscent of everything Aya is, was, and will always be. It's my sincerest hope that I get to thank you personally someday. Meanwhile, we wish you the best. Thank you so very much for your magnanimous gift and support, with much love and gratitude, Maria Jean Aya and..." Cow? Aya's extended family and friends."
So I meant, this is what community is about, and it's also where we need to watch out for each other. I mean, we like to think this is Walnut Creek, but this is not Walnut Creek. So watch out for your neighbors, watch out for yourself, and have a great life and enjoy living here in Emeryville. Thank you very much.
Move the resolution.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Am I supposed to... Okay, all right. Kurt?
It's quite heavy, Karen. It feels like a bottle of whiskey.
Where can we meet you after the meeting?
I'm pretty easy to find.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, gavel. That's very funny.
Nice. And this one, I can't bang.
You can't bang very hard.
But it was probably your ideal, wasn't it?
Thank you for your service.
Oh, that's nice.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both, yes. That's great.
Thank you.
Nice gift.
And good luck to the new council members. May God be with you.
They have to vote on the election.
Yes, they do. Thank you.
You can't leave.
Move the resolutions.
You can't get out of here.
General municipal election.
Second. I just... I want to make a quick comment about items 4.1 and 2 and 4.13. This is measures U and V. I want to take this time to thank people who supported the efforts around measures U and V. I'm very grateful. The members of the council who supported the measures rule, the candidates for city council who were also running their own campaigns, and that's difficult work, and I really appreciate your support. The League of Women Voters, our Chamber of Commerce, the citizen volunteers that help fold stuff and stamp envelopes, including young children who were enlisted to do these things. The individual contributors to the campaign in the city. And then also, my gratitude to staff for all the work to prepare the ballot measures and do that analysis. So I'm very grateful that the measures passed, but it was also a reminder to me why I live here and why it's so great. There it was just our small town, and people were focused and willing to help, and thank you.
Can I comment that I just... I'm excited about those measures passing because of what it means for our capital improvement projects and our program in Emeryville. We were grappling this year to figure out how to fund those kinds of projects, and I think our future city council will be really appreciative to be able to use those funds and additional revenues to support quality of life, infrastructure improvements for folks in town. It'll make a difference.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to make a comment. In the state of California, three cities tried to pass a charter city. Only one passed, and that was in Emeryville. And I attribute that to the wisdom of the council in demanding that that be a simple one and a half page document. The others were long, extended documents, and it gave opportunity to confuse people. So I think the council acted very wisely. I don't believe that that measure would have passed if it had been a lengthy compendium. So I want to commend the council members on that.
Reese, did you want to...
Yeah, I wanted to go back to item 3, and before the two of you step down, I just want to thank each of you for your public service. Unless you sit in this, in these chairs and your immediate family, I don't think people really understand the toll that this kind of public service takes. So I want to thank you for these last five years, and the city is in better shape because of your service.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you.
I second everything you say, Ruth. It's the truth.
We have a motion in the... Do we have a second on the...
I'll second the resolutions unless I can already do.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, so this is for all three resolutions?
All three?
Yeah, under four.
Was Davis and West?
Yes.
Sure.
Are we caught up, Karen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Item 4.2, installation of elected officials, administration of the oath of office to the two newly-elected city council members.
Where's the breath band when they step down?
The drum rolls?
Yeah, I agree. Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm listening.
It's the new elected offices.
Yeah.
So if they can come up...
So they need to come forward, right? Come up?
Yes.
But we can sit here and watch?
Do they come to the podium? Karen, what's supposed to happen right now? Should they come to the podium to do this?
The pass?
Or up here?
Come up here.
Come up to the dais?
We can do it this way. We should have had a movie rehearsal.
Could have been here last night, practicing.
The two of you, you're paid after me. You're just going to do. I...
I.
Diane. I. Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the State of California...
And the Constitution of the State of California...
Against all enemies foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies foreign and domestic...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California...
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California...
State of California...
State of California...
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
Without any mental reservation or purpose invasion...
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. And Diane, here is your flag, and your green patch, and Scott, here is yours.
All right. Welcome.
I get to keep going.
Oh, wait a second.
Are we caught up now?
What are these?
I'll really have it.
Yeah. Okay.
You're fine.
Okay. So moving on to item 4.3, appointment of mayor and vice mayor of the city of Emeryville for the one-year term expiring November 2015. I'd like to move for the appointment of Ruth Atkins for mayor and Nora Davis as vice mayor.
Second, though.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, who seconded that motion?
Who made the motion?
I know, you made the motion. Who seconded it?
Well, let's say Nora, someone over here to the left, seconded it.
Let's get on with it, guys. We got a lot of work to do tonight.
Okay. And unanimously?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ready for the?
Okay.
Oath of office. Shall we switch places hearing?
After the oath.
After? Okay.
I, Ruth Atkins, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
So help me God. Who wrote that? Okay.
Yep.
Oh, you want a signature.
You want to slide down one?
There you go. Did you need this back? I nearly signed your name, but that's all right.
Do you want to stay in your spot, Nora?
Sure, sure. Let's keep it simple here.
Okay.
We've got two bookends.
That's because we have co-leadership.
It's a collective.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to, before we start our regular meetings tonight, I want to thank Jack for an excellent year as mayor. And it was finally, although this was something that the city first started to look at in 2008, we actually became a charter city under your tenure. So thank you so much for your leadership. And I will divulge that I know that she might sleep better now.
A little bit.
After, after some things that have happened to the city. So thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Ruth.
All right. This brings us, so, good evening, everybody. This brings us to the Blue Agenda item, which is the city council as successor agency to the redevelopment agency. This is a regular meeting of December 2nd. And let us, I'll call this meeting to order, and Karen, can you do a roll call, please?
Give me a second. It's mine. It's yours. Okay.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Here.
And Mayor Atkins?
Here. And in a slight departure from our routine, I'd like us to rise and ask the newly appointed council member Martinez to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any public comments on items not on the successor agency agenda? Come on up.
For those who are not aware, my name is Andre Carpio, American resident of Emeryville. And I, I didn't choose, but it happened that I came to live here in Emeryville since 1968. When I first arrived in 1962, I was given a tour of Emeryville, and I was offered to go hunting in an area that is now full of buildings. So I didn't shoot anything, but I was given a gun. Anyway, first, I want to thank Scott and Diane for being elected. And I did also participate in helping, and I also did something that is typically political in which, in order to delude the vote, the opposing vote, I did ask former councilmen because he to run, and I knew he would gather the vote. And by doing so, then he weakened the opposition because I really wanted you two to be elected. I also have to thank Nora Davis and Ruth Atkins to support you, to endorse you. And I'm also glad that we have had our elected official, Jennifer West and Kurt Brinkman. And it was very pleasing for me. It was a peaceful leadership, having this majority. This is a time in which I could have slept at night without the fear of being raided. And I remember my last raid, when Ruth Atkins was mayor, they came and for two, they destroyed my scaffolding, so I could not finish my stainless steel roof. And this is a very sad episode of my stay here in Emeryville. And I could go on and on and on. But I want to stop right here, and I stopped. I hope the new leadership, I wouldn't have to put up again with raid because people do not like the way I live. And the way I live is my culture. I learned my trade from my father. My father learned his trade from his grandfather, and his grandfather learned it by doing things that were few machine at that time, which were agriculture machine. And so I would have to say that my culture has been not only injured, but insulted. And I could not, I could blame those who are typically ignorant of foreign culture. Thank you.
Good evening, councilmembers. This is truly historical day. Andre, I entered the election, but I never expected to campaign, and I didn't ask anybody to vote for me. I just didn't think two people should be seated on the city council without an election. So I wanted to make sure that an election happened. And then I want to thank Nora and Ruth for their early endorsement of Scott and Diane before the nomination closed. That made it more difficult for John Boulis to get elected. And then I guess Ruth, you changed in your vote, you endorsed John. But, so I think there's probably some lessons to be learned here. I mean, if you want, you know, new people to run for city council, you don't endorse anybody until after the nomination period closes. I think that makes a fair playing field for everybody. So I'm here, I love Emeryville, I record, I post the videos of all these meetings and the regional meetings. And I agree with Jennifer's comment earlier, I watched it at home, about what's happening in the region. I record all the regional meetings, and it's really important to be synced with the region and all the benefits we can get, especially from the Transportation Authority now, they got $8 billion to spend, and I think we can get a good share of it. Thank you.
I counsel people, councilmembers. So I want to talk about something that's not on the agenda, and I don't think it's been on the agenda for a while. I think it's something that you'll all agree with immediately, but I think it's something that you might not have the guts to follow through with. And that's it. You guys all need a, sorry, you guys all need a raise. The city council, city council isn't, it's difficult to, we've seen now like a handful of one-term city council people, and it's proven that it's difficult to keep Emeryville residents. I don't want to put you down. We, the current salary just may not be a big enough incentive to keep folks on the city council. And I don't, I don't know the machinations of how that would be set. I don't know what sort of power you have under measures U, under measure U. But I do think it's probably at least worth looking at, asking your staff to look at, and, and figure out what people in your position for other, other similarly sized cities with similar budgets pays their council people. And no, Diane didn't put me up to this. Thanks.
Can I make a comment? In response, I just?
We'll finish with public comment.
Good evening. I came to say what hasn't been said yet, which is congratulations to the two of you on being elected to the city council. And I wish you the very best in the next four years in your service. And thank you to the rest of you for your continued service to the city and to everybody who participated in this election, whether you were a voter, whether you were a candidate, whether you were an endorser or a supporter. Democracy is alive and well because of that, and that's what needs to be remembered today. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I don't know if there's a status report on the oversight board. Okay, it didn't, it didn't meet? Okay. And then if there's any information or status report from the chair, again, no.
We didn't meet.
No, okay. So with that, we'll adjourn the successor agency agenda. Oops, I'm so used to the?
Yeah, we're missing one. I'll pass it along here.
And I will move on to the revised agenda of the regular city council meeting. And please note that we are still all here, and there are no special orders of the day. Is anybody wishing to speak on items not on the city council agenda?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Atkins and councilmembers Bob Cantor, and president and CEO of the Emeryville Chamber of Commerce. I just want to, first of all, extend our congratulations to Mr. Donahue and Diane Martinez for your victory in the fall. Congratulations so much. And I want to thank you now, former mayor Jack Asher, for mentioning the Chamber of Commerce. We did indeed endorse measures U and V, and we're happy to do that. I was proud to be a signatory on one of the ballot measures, and I was happy to do that as well. We were partners with you in that, as we often are. And I just want to say to all of you, but especially to our newer council members, I will never pretend to say anything as profound or meaningful as Kurt Brinkman and Jennifer West said at their exit speeches, as were quite eloquent. We have been, we have a unique partnership here in this town. This town doesn't look like it does by accident, and it's because of a lot of hard work by a lot of good people. I know how lucky I am, and I know that firsthand. I talk to Chamber of Commerce executives across the Western United States every day, and they say, Bob, what's going on in your town? What's the secret? And I say, there is no secret. We have a lot of smart people who know what's the best for everybody. And they understand that the economics of the business community and welcoming business and the prosperity and the tax revenue that brings is critical. I understand also, after 13 and a half years as the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce here, that we don't always agree. We will disagree, and that's okay. That's democracy. That's going to happen. But when we do disagree, was that the three minutes count? I'm sorry. Is that on camera?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, anyway, thank you. I do have what I'd like to leave for both Scott and Diane. If I may, I have a folder for you from the Chamber of Commerce. I'll leave it with Karen, she can give it to you later on in the evening. Thanks and congratulations to everybody.
Any other public comments?
Scott has mine.
All right. Do we have a city manager's report tonight?
No, nothing tonight.
Okay.
Ruth, I'd like to pull the action. Oh, I'm sorry. Actually, I take that back. Sorry, we have the holiday tree lighting this Friday, 5 o'clock. If it's not raining, we're going to start in the plaza and then come up for the tree lighting. If it is raining, I believe we're going to start here at City Hall. Cindy is not here, but that's the plan. It's 5 to 7, it's free, please come out.
Okay, thank you. And you wanted to pull some?
I want to move the consent calendar, but I want to pull the action minutes for the 18th. Under public comments, we have left out Barbara Singleton's last name, and I'd like to include that.
Oh, thank you.
And then also on, there's another place where she spoke. That was on page 34, if you can, that was on the public hearing, if you add her name in that place. Otherwise, I just moved the consent.
You moved the consent calendar with those amendments?
Right.
Okay. Anybody else want to pull anything else?
Can I just pull item 5.4 for comment? I can make a comment now, or I can wait?
I'd like to pull 5.10 for discussion.
So without exception, everything but 5.4 and 5.10 are unanimous. Diane, what's your comment on 5.4?
Who seconded the consent calendar?
I did. Jack did.
Jack did.
Okay. Okay. I just wanted to weigh in that I have an interest in serving on stop waste if, if there's no objection to that. This will come before us, and at our next meeting, we will be appointing city council representatives to various regional, county, and state bodies for calendar year 2015. And I know that councilmember Jennifer West really valued her time on stop waste, and if it's available, I'd like to take that seat.
I would support that.
Maybe we should go through, maybe we should pull this off consent and talk about each thing, because we need, we, we have vacancies now, and so let's just, let's just take this one by one. Thank you for doing, for doing that. Let's see.
This is not an action item, though.
No.
It's just information.
It's just, it's an inform-
But it's a good idea to get it done now.
Well, if we get a sense of what people want to serve on, then for the next agenda, we can put that into the resolution. So I'm on page 41. The first is the- The first is the AC Transit Emeryville Liaison Committee that Jennifer and I served on. This is a committee that doesn't meet very often, however, and I'm willing to continue to serve if someone would like to step up as the second city council member.
I'd like to see Scott do it.
I'll do it.
Scott, okay. And then, we need a representative to A-BAG and I would encourage our new council members to take that on. I don't know if you want to...
I'll do it.
And then, do you still want to stay on as alternate, Jack?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Then, A-CAP is city manager and city manager designee. I don't think we need to take any changes to that. The Alameda County Fire Advisory Committee, Kurt was the main member, I was the alternate. I'd like to step down from that, so we need two people to fill that.
I'm happy to take that one.
I'd be happy to be an alternate.
This is all information because we're not taking action, but we're giving direction to the staff. The next is the HACA, the Alameda County Housing Authority Housing Commission.
I'd like to continue to serve there.
Okay, that's great. Alameda County Mayor's Conference, that changes automatically.
Yeah.
To the mayor and vice mayor. So, please note those changes. I'd like to stay on as with AC TC, the Transportation Commission, we need a new alternate.
I'll do it.
Joyce is doing a wonderful job on that.
Is Joyce still here?
No, I don't see...
No.
I did just learn that evidently she did resign from that, so there is a vacancy, yes.
Okay, well, we don't have a name tonight to plug into that. I didn't know that. And then, the Alameda County Healthy Homes Department, used to be known as the Lead Poisoning Prevention and Abatement District. It's actually a joint powers authority. I've enjoyed my time on it and I would like to continue to stay on that.
Okay.
It's been quite an education about lead and healthy housing and asthma and a whole bunch of health things. We still, we have a vacancy for mosquito abatement district. This has been vacant for quite some time. I'll offer that to the two new council members if you want that. We had a non-elected, but that doesn't mean that we can't have an elected serve on that. It is a compensated meeting.
I'm going to pass on this one.
It's also in San Lorenzo.
Let me look at when it meets, let's see, it meets... Okay, I'll do it.
Okay.
Good.
Great. Oop, I just lost my page.
Diane is Waste Management.
Yeah. And I'd like to stay on as alternate. City School Committee is everybody. The East Bay Green Corridor Partnership, Nora's been a member, you want to continue with that?
Yeah, unless either one of you would like to be on that.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Then, the JPA for, I think this is basically for the East Bay Bridge Shopping Center. It's been made up of four council members. I don't know why, it precedes my time on the council, why it's not all five.
I'd like to stay on that.
Okay.
I'd like to be on that as well.
Great. And then, we need two others.
Two others?
Two others.
Sure. Well, I'm on board, Scott didn't say yes yet. Number 14.
Mayor Atkin, I can explain why it's four. The JPA is made up, I believe it's, it's got a planning board and an appellate board. The planning board is made up of planning commissioners from Emeryville and Oakland and I believe Emeryville has the minority on that board. And then, the appellate board, I believe, is made up of three Oakland council members and four Emeryville council members.
But we trump.
You trump.
The entire time I've served in office, it's never met to my knowledge.
It hasn't met since about 1995.
Yeah, okay. This would be a real time...
But I would say, if the time ever comes, when the general plan vision of redeveloping that shopping center with high-density mixed-use development is ever realized, that JPA is going to have to be reconvened.
Red hot.
All right, so who, who do we have so far?
Councilmember Davis and Asher.
Martinez.
And Martinez.
And Martinez.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott Donahue. Okay, then the Goodman Plainfield JPA. Nora, do you want to stay on that?
Unless our new members would like to get involved with Tom Bates Plainfield.
Do we get to play soccer with Tom Bates?
They meet very irregularly.
Yeah, it's not a major time commitment.
It's not a big commitment.
If you want to get it off your plate, I'm happy to take it from you.
Well, because you have young, young children in the family.
Yeah, that's actually more charming.
This is something that we really want to keep our eye on. We invested in that, we continue to support it, and we need to have a voice there, so...
Then, I'm your woman.
Terrific, terrific.
Thank you, Diane. We need a representative for the League of California Cities.
I would like that to be me.
Okay.
Good.
You got it. And that's for 16, that's to go to the meetings, statewide meetings, and then the East Bay Division, I would also like to give that up. These are dinners, these are Thursday night dinners all around Contra Costa and Alameda County. And it'd be great if one, the two of you new folks wanted to do that.
Scott, I'll defer to you because I've been hogging a lot of these meetings, but...
Well, it says these are dinner, does that mean we're buying our own dinners? Oh, man, that sounds pricey.
They pay for it.
They pay for it. It's a, it's a free meal, you just have to get there.
Yeah.
But it's a good time for you to meet with other council members.
Okay.
And learn from...
Free meal, I'm on board.
And I'm happy to be the alternate.
Great, thank you.
Good, good.
All right. Have we missed any committees or commissions? I don't think so either. All right, so that's an information item for us to take action on later this month to take effect with the new year. Then, we're on to 5.10, Preservation of Design Immunity Affirmative Defense. Scott, you wanted to make a comment?
I just wanted to say, this looks really complex and it just seems like when I read through it, that the council would be giving up certain oversight on design. And as someone who makes things, it just seems maybe not a good idea. Now, I can understand there are legal issues here that, you know, that it just, I don't feel comfortable just voting on it tonight. I'd like to continue it until our next council meeting. It just seems...
What's the purpose of continuing it?
So, I could further understand it because it looks to me like it might even, you know, when we did our charter city vote, does, this idea might be only possible for a charter city and that we didn't vote to do anything other than continue as a general law city except for the purpose of doing a transfer tax. And when I read it over, I'm just not comfortable that it could be involved in that. And I just need to hear more about it than from the written material and I'd like to continue it.
Mayor Atkin, I appreciate what you're saying, it is relatively complex. I fully support this measure and I'm pretty antsy about the council having the ultimate say-so. But I think it's important that we not move forward until you have a clear understanding of what you're voting for. I would move to continue this item to the next meeting. Is there any problem with this, Michael?
No.
Or is anybody going to sue us in the meantime or something like that?
Can't help you there, but...
Okay, I'll second that.
All right, so that's been seconded. We will continue 5.10 to the next meeting. We have no public hearings or policy items, that brings us to administrative items, number eight on the agenda. The first is about the fire station improvements. Moore, it looks like you have a report to give.
Complex.
All right, Mayor Atkin, members of the city council, this item is for the award of the fire station improvements project. This is a project that was approved, the city council approved the plans and specs back in July of this year. We went out to bid in September after the building department finished their plan review and we had a chance to really put the bid package together. And we publicly bid the project. We opened up bids on October 22nd. Before that time, we issued a addendum to the contract document so that we could take care of any of the questions that were raised by the bidders. We had a lot of interest in this project. We had 11 bids that we received on the project, which is great. Our engineer's estimate was about $1.2 million for the work. The bids came in right on target, we're very happy with that. But what was typically a routine, two-page staff report to award a construction contract on a consent calendar became a very complex 11-page staff report with 12 attachments because we received some discrepancies or we received a couple protests in the bid. And I'll move on, so... So, we received 11 bids, as I stated. The first bid we received was from a company called SLM Development, it was for 1.14 million. Unfortunately, they didn't sign their addendum to the bid document, so they were $100,000 lower than the next bidder up. So, but we anticipate, since they didn't see the addendum, they probably saw some things that they missed in their bid. And so, the protocol is to reject a bid that doesn't include a signed addendum with the bid. The second bid was received by, was received from B-Side Incorporated here in West Oakland. And it was, appeared to us to be a good bid, 1.24 or 5 million. We reviewed the document, but unfortunately, due to an administrative error, which we've corrected since and we won't repeat again, it was posted before we noticed that the non-collusion affidavit wasn't signed. And so, soon thereafter, we received a bid protest from the third bidder, which was $3,000 higher, protesting the bid because that statement was not signed with the bid when it was turned in. So, soon thereafter, we posted revised results, which stated Pacific Mountain Contractors is the apparent, or is the lowest responsive bid that we received. With that, we received a letter from protesting our decision from B-Side claiming that they in fact had signed the non-collusion affidavit, but they made a clerical error and didn't submit it with the document. And they also claimed that they did, but because the notary statement was in the bid document. And so, as we went and we reviewed the information, we did find a notary, but we did not see the non-collusion affidavit. Now, a non-collusion affidavit is something you need to turn in so that you can assure the public that you didn't do any collusion while preparing your bid. So, it's very important that that's turned in. And by state law, well, go on, the protests that we received on our decision stated that the city could waive the irregularity by saying that contract law allows us to waive the irregularity. But we feel that given the irregularity, we want to make sure that the document is included in order to proceed with the work. So, we feel that our decision to move with Pacific Mountain Contractors is the correct way to proceed with the work. So, there's a number of steps we need to do to move forward with construction and they're highlighted here below. This thing's really touchy today. So, what we need to do in order to move forward with construction is we need to reject the apparent, the first apparent low bid because they didn't sign the addendum. And then, we need to reject the second low bid because they didn't submit the non-collusion affidavit form signed. And then, we need to, and then there was another letter received from B-Side, which they requested that we hold a non, they wanted us to hold a responsibility hearing, which essentially is a hearing that we would hold if we were basing our decision on the fact that they weren't a responsible contractor, but that really isn't the case. They're probably a responsible contractor, we've never worked with them, but they didn't sign the form, they didn't sign the non-collusion affidavit form. So, we were denying a request to do that hearing. They can speak here today if they're here to speak on it, but we feel that there, there's no reason to have this responsibility hearing. The other thing we need to do when we award the contract is we need to deny the bid protest filed by B-Side. They also filed a protest against Pacific Mountain Contractors' bid. Turns out, they turned the protest in too late. They have five days from the time we posted on the internet, on the website, as to who our decision is for. They had five days to file that protest and they turned in their protest after the fact. So, we are recommending that we don't even consider this protest, so that would be another thing you'd need to do is deny the bid protest received by B-Side or filed by B-Side. And then, so, then, as part of their protest, they were saying that there was an irregularity in the, in the non-collusion affidavit form that we actually had received signed by Pacific Mountain Contractors. That form needed to be updated by state law, but it was a form that the city provided. And so, since we caused the irregularity, we don't think that it's a true statement to say that, a reason to reject Pacific Mountain Contractors' bid because we provided the form to them, it wasn't something that they did on their own. And so, the last thing we would ask the city council to do would be to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Pacific Mountain Contracts in the amount of 1.24780 dollars to move forward with the contract. So, assuming you move forward with that and we're going to move forward with the construction, I'd like to talk about the clock as part of the project. So, maybe you want to discuss this part of the project first and make a direction and then we can go back to the clock design as part of the work?
Okay, hang on, I'll just, at this point, I'll take any public comment if anybody wants to talk about this agenda item. Okay. All right. Talk about the clock.
Okay, I'll talk about the clock. So, when the city council approved the plans and specs, they didn't really give clear direction on what we want to do on the clock for the design. We had a preferred design that was suggested by the architect, but the council at the time wanted a clock that was lit and something that we could read the numbers with a little bit better. So, we actually found a clock arm mechanism that would be backlit with LED lights that would fit in the clock design that was recommended by the architect. So, this is the recommended design by our architect. It could have LED lights on the back of the arms only, not on the numbers, so it won't be too bright. And it would be fonts here as shown that could match the brass lettering that's on the building. Because the building has lettering that talks about Alameda County Fire Station 34, so this matches it. If you wanted more visible fonts, we could darken it up. Either of these options are included with the bids we received, but it'd be at your discretion as to what you'd like to see out there. So, if you give us direction on what you'd like to see, we could...
All right, well, council members, do you want to weigh in on the darker numbers or the brassier ones? Just go down the line here.
Okay, this is an entertaining discussion here, being a visual artist, that we get to have aesthetic choices up here on the council. to have aesthetic choices up here on the council. I go for the brass.
I'd support that. My question is, what about the maintenance of this thing?
This will be maintained from the outside if we ever have to maintain it, whereas the previous version had to be maintained from the inside of the tower and we couldn't get access to it.
When you say maintained from the outside, do you mean it would be maintained with the fire ladder truck going?
Get a ladder up there to climb up a ladder to get to it. That would be the way to do it. It's not going to require a lot of maintenance. It'll be a new mechanism, a heavier duty than the old one. But the older one was not very strong. It didn't work after about a year and we couldn't get up there to maintain it because there was no access, so.
It's going to come with any kind of guarantee that it'll work for five years?
Well, we have a one-year guarantee on the workmanship, and I don't know what the guarantee is for that mechanism, but I can take a look at it.
There's nothing worse than a clock that has the wrong time on it.
Maurice, does the brass tarnish over time?
I suspect it could. I suspect unless there's a sealer put on top of it.
So I might be a minority here, but I actually would prefer darker coloring so that's more visible and where we don't have to deal with tarnish as a maintenance cost.
Well, yes, unless you like the look of the patina and the tarnish and it maybe becomes more visible. It's subjective, whatever you'd like to do.
I would move the brass and move ahead with this thing. We've been talking about this darned clock for 10 years. I'm sick of it. Let's move ahead with the brass.
I'm fine with the brass.
That's a motion.
All right, so that's, a majority here wants the brass, so you have direction there.
Thank you.
And so we have to take action here on the resolution. Is there a motion on the resolution?
Mayor?
I move...
Public comment, please.
I asked for that already.
We have public comment.
I think there's another...
Oh, okay. Come on up, Mr. Carpio.
My apologies.
I have to make a comment on, from a material of engineering point of view, the brass corrode is an alloy of steel and zinc. It's not bronze, which is copper and tin. So I would move that the clock be made out of stainless steel, hospital grade 316. It stays shiny, rain or shine, and it doesn't deform with the heat. And not only that, but the stainless steel does not have any interference with any communication. For instance, if the antenna is around the tower, then we will not have any interference that we would have with a brass assembly. So I would like, if you agree, that perhaps we could make some change and that the cost of stainless steel at the price of scrap is a couple dollars a pound. And stainless steel is like platinum and gold, doesn't get old, so you can get stainless steel very cheap, much cheaper than brass. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I move both resolutions.
I second.
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
This is on 172, when we talk about the revision to the non collusion form, the unrevised one that then got used. And we talked about kind of cleaning up the administrative process for receiving the bids and making sure everything's checked off. This document, I'm assuming, has now been revised and we're not going to have something like this again. Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, so there was a motion and a second. Davis and Donahue, anybody opposed? Good with that? All five members of the council approve this. That takes us to the transportation committee report. And the first issue is 8.2.1, creating red zones on both sides of the garage exit at 4300 Horton Street. Is there a, I know there was some discussion by former council member West about this.
Yeah, can we have some clarity about that?
There's a mistake on that report. It's not the Artist Co-op HOA, it's Horton Street Lofts HOA. They're the ones that have requested this, Horton Street Lofts.
Oh, okay. On 261, yeah.
And we don't know, the question that was brought to us earlier today was about the local...
Contacting them.
Contact with people.
So at the transportation committee, there was some question as to what the impacts of parking would be in that area if we were to put the red curb and how much red curb to put in there. We would need at least 10 feet on either side of the driveway there in question to improve sight distance in that area. So if you put a 10-foot red curb on either side of that driveway, you would eliminate at least one parking on the north side of the driveway and probably one parking space on the south side of the driveway. Right now, when I was out there today, there was two cars parked on the south side of the driveway, one illegally because it was extending into another curb cut just to the south. There's about 28 feet between two driveways, and if you put a 10-foot red curb in there, you'd only leave 18 feet of space where you could park a car. So a smaller car could park between those two driveways. On the north side of the driveway, there's about 60 feet of curb there, and if you were to eliminate 10 feet of it, you could probably park two cars legally and still have extra room for maybe a motorcycle parking space. So that was the big question at the transportation committee as to how many spaces you'd impact. And I know there's a demand, a high demand for parking in that area if we paint these curbs.
The problem here for the members of the HOA is when they exit onto Horton Street, the visibility is impaired because the car is parked too close to the exit. And that's also where Sherwin comes into that T-intersection or very close to it. So if we can extend the red curb, it will give more visibility and improve the safety. That's what they were asking for, and I supported that. And as far as notifying the surrounding people, the HOA are mostly the people that, you know, the residential people that are surrounding that. And we all know parking is a problem, but visibility, when you come out onto Horton, is a problem too. Many times, when I come out Sherwin, you know, to turn either left or right on Horton, it's very difficult to see traffic. So I would ask the council to support this request.
Any other comments from staff? I see public comment, too. Any other comments from, or questions, clarifying questions from council?
I have a question, is on 8.2.3, if I may.
No, we're on 2.1.
One by one, okay.
So what is our process then in terms of notifying people? I understand that the request comes from the HOA. Do we, after we make a decision, then notify people? Or what, how is this going to work?
Well, many times in advance of even having a transportation committee items, we will send notices out to those affected property owners. But this notice we received from the property owner and then, of course, we've got the Artist Co-op right adjacent to it, and I believe there, well, there's at least two people here from the Artist Co-op right now, at least one maybe.
All right. Why don't you come up if you have a public comment on this item?
Hi, Tim Curran, 4250 Horton Street. I'm in the Artist Co-op. This parking space is directly in front of my residence. Parking there is difficult. I think this is evidence of the request to have the increased red zone and visibility is more evidence that the traffic on Horton Street has gotten fast and furious and very dense, and it's a safety issue. And I think the whole area needs to be studied. I think that the traffic calming that's going to be studied north of 45th Street needs to also be studied south of 45th Street, between Sherwin and 45th, all the way down to Park and all the way down to 40th Street. There's a lot of rat running, there's a lot of local business traffic that gets out of there in a hurry. It's a dangerous place. If you take away this parking place, my daughter, seven-year-old, will be crossing across the street more often without a crosswalk at the peak hours, in the morning and in the evening. I think much study has to be done in this area, and there hasn't been enough study done with this, with the parking and with the traffic. I think it's primarily a traffic issue, but also a parking issue. I'd also like to say that the parking spaces across the street are often flooded. The area doesn't have drainage. It's, as Public Works knows, that the area is improperly drained with lack of storm sewer. So we have very bad parking there to begin with. We've also lost a parking space across the street with a red zone to increase the visibility or truck turning radius on to Sherwin Street. So we've had traffic impacts and parking impacts, and as he's noted, parking there is at a premium.
So I have a suggestion, which it seems to me that when you're pulling out of the building, the sightline that's the most impaired and perhaps the most dangerous is when the driver looks to the left. So rather than to the right, because then you already have more capacity to see traffic going in the other direction. So I would suggest creating a red zone to the left as you're exiting the, and not to the right, not both sides.
South of the driveway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. Can...
I'd support it.
I'll tell you, I think the Horton Street Lofts, this has been working through the city for about nine months. Let's go with your suggestion, Ruth. That's a good compromise. See if that alleviates the problem somewhat, and then they can come back and tell us either it's working or it's not working.
Does that a second to the amendment?
That's a second.
I have to recuse myself because I am within 500 feet.
Great, thank you. So are those in favor of just doing the south side red curb?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Come back up, Scott. 8.2.2 is a request from Federal Express to remove the westernmost diagonal parking space on the north side of 63rd Street and put a red zone there. Is there any discussion about that? Any members of the public here wishing to speak on that? Anything anybody wants to say about it from staff, from council?
Federal Express came to the transportation committee meeting, and, you know, they have the big trucks, and rather than have those big trucks out in the street offloading, if we can accommodate them to back in with the removal of one parking space, we are the city and the people in the city are the winners on that. So I would suggest that we move ahead with that.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Do I hear a second?
Were people notified about this in the area?
I don't believe there was anybody to notify there.
Well, this has been going on for about four months now.
Uh huh.
And there was some notification given early on, but not when this final one was taken.
Okay, thank you, chief.
So that's a motion.
I'll second.
Martine, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, I don't hear any opposed. 8.2.3 is a request from Parkside Residential to create a two-hour green zone for all existing parking spaces on Stanford Avenue between Hollis and Doyle and to remove the white zone near Pacific Rim. What's the rationale for this?
I can report on this. So we were receiving a lot of complaints during construction of the Parkside project that contractors are parking on the street on Stanford Avenue all day. And then, so we had discussions with the developer, they've also, they've stated that they're going to need parking around the project to serve their commercial spaces that are going to be, that are going to open up when the project's finished. And we thought that it might be a good idea to create the two-hour zone now so that the contractors won't park on the street all day and take up spaces that the general public could be using. With regards to the white zone, that was added to the request during the transportation committee discussion.
By whom?
By, I think, I think during the conversation. Didn't it come up?
Yeah, it came up. It wasn't part of the original request.
Wasn't part of the original request by the Parkside developer?
Which white zone are you talking about? The one on Doyle Street?
No, the one on Stanford Avenue.
Years ago, we were supposed to remove that white part, right strip on Stanford. That was an action that was taken a long time ago. Nothing ever happened.
Well, okay, but, and I did talk to the Pacific Rim School, and they're all in support of removing that white zone.
Of course, of course.
So the recommendation is to create green throughout for the whole block.
I would move that.
So the question that we come up with green zones is one of enforcement. And so I always look to the police chief about whether we're painting something that we're not going to enforce.
We have stepped up our enforcement on the North Hollis Plan, and this will just be an extension of that.
So are you telling us that it will, it'll be enforced, the two-hour parking?
Yes.
Okay.
You had a couple hundred parking violations last month. I mean, something's happened.
All right. Is there a motion for this?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Great.
Before we move off the transportation committee, I'd like to put something on the agenda for the, are we meeting in December, Ken?
No.
No, okay. January. I've noticed that U-Haul over at 45th and San Pablo is using the public right-of-way to park their trucks. I went by there a number of times, and there's usually six to 10 trucks there. That is not a proper use of the public right-of-way. What, so...
Are you asking that be put on the agenda?
I want it on the transportation agenda. Or should it be on public safety? What do you say, Ken?
It should be on the transportation committee agenda. I'm not sure what we can do at this point because they are legally registered licensed vehicles, and as long as they move every 72 hours, we don't have a mechanism at this point to cite them.
Mayor Atkin?
They're really taking advantage of the public right-of-way.
Mayor Atkin?
Yeah.
We're here.
Okay.
I have to admit, the planning division is aware of this issue. It's been called to our attention by a neighbor. It's been kind of down our priority list because we're a little bit swamped right now. But it's in conjunction with a business that's operating out of a storefront where the Cash for Gold place used to be, which is no longer there, which is probably a good thing. But it's not a permitted use in that zoning district.
Ah, okay.
So they need to go away. And they also, wherever they go, they need to have off-street parking for their trucks. So we're in the process of abating it with a notice of violation, but as I say, we just, due to our workload, we just haven't had a chance to get it out yet.
That's good to know.
Good.
But you have motivation now to get out there.
We have a lot of motivation now.
All right.
That's good, that's good. It all worked out, guys.
All right. So moving on, we have no city as housing successor. This takes us to communications and reports first from department heads. Anyone want to say anything?
I have something.
Yep.
We are about to publish the notice of preparation for the environmental impact report for the Sherwin-Williams project. There will then be a 30-day public comment period on that document as soon as it is published. It's a simple little four-page document that explains the, basically, it explains the topics that will be addressed in the EIR for the project. And during that 30-day period, anyone who's interested can comment to us on what they think the EIR should include. There will also be what's called a scoping meeting for the same purpose, to discuss the content of the EIR. That scoping meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December 18th, in a little over two weeks from tonight. It will be here in the council chambers starting at 6:30 PM. And that meeting will just be with staff and the EIR consultants, but any members of the council or anyone else who's interested is certainly invited to attend. Again, it's to comment on what the contents of the EIR should be. I have to say that a few people have received an advanced copy of the notice of preparation, and unfortunately, there's an error in it. It says that that meeting will be part of a regular planning commission meeting, which is not true. There's no planning commission meeting on the 18th, so it will be just a standalone meeting, again, here in the council chambers on Thursday, the 18th, at 6:30 PM.
Thank you. Any other department heads? Any council members wishing this? Any council members wishing to...
I just want to welcome Diane and Scott. We got a lot of work out of it.
Thank you.
It's going to be good.
Thank you.
And, I wanted, there was a public comment earlier on related to our pay, and I just wanted to say that council did take action on this earlier in the year, to take effect after the election results are certified, so city council members are getting a raise.
Raise.
I don't remember when we took that.
I thought that could only be done at a general election.
Yeah, you, so that's what we did earlier in the year, you adopted the ordinance, but it only goes into effect at the conclusion of the election, so the election has occurred...
So that if people are angry at us, they can vote us out.
So it will go into effect very soon here.
And what is this big jump in salary going to be?
Well, actually, it was, because you had not, you're allowed to increase your salary by 5% annually, and then, of course, you can only do it in conjunction with a election.
Right.
So you can't increase it any more than once every two years, but up to 10%. And in any event, the council had not increased its salary for many years, so it was about a 35% increase. So I don't have the number in front of me, but we can certainly provide that to the council.
I just want to add a little addendum, not only did we not increase, we actually took a pay cut when the rest of, when the rest of the city was, when we had layoffs and other people were taking cuts, so we took a cut at that time.
Correct.
So, anyway, I just wanted to...
People might like to know, what's the ballpark figure we're talking about here? A thousand bucks a month?
No, it's about, it's about 1,200, 1,300.
I think it's about 1,200 a month.
Whoa, whoa, over the top.
So, and actually, it's more than, like the city of Alameda, the city of Albany, they do like 400 bucks a month, or something like that, so we, so we, as a true stipend, so we're not overpay, but we're not down as low as some other cities that have a larger population base. So, that being said, the last bit of our agenda lists committee vacancies, so please take a look at that. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.